Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. At this time, if you have any audible devices, turn them off or to silence. We have several cases before us today. We will begin by, we're going to dispense with a reading of how to participate in the public meeting. However, those procedures are on the back table there. If anybody would like to take one, makes a good read. At this time, I will ask if the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous session? And if so, are there any edits, comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Henson.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Steele. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Y'all bear with me just a moment. Before we get started, just a couple of basic rules. This is a recommending body, the Paulding County Planning Commission is, and every application before us today is within the Paulding County jurisdiction. So, any recommendation will be forwarded to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners for their meeting tonight at 7:00, correct? So, if you are the applicant or you're agent of the applicant, you will need to be present for it to be considered, both here and at the Board of Commissioners meeting. If you have an interest in the application, I recommend that you be present also. I will give an opportunity for the applicant to come forward and present their application to the Planning Commission. They will have 15 minutes to do so. They may utilize all that time, or allow others to speak, or may reserve some time for rebuttal if anything comes up during opposition. Any questions from the Planning Commission or from the Board of Commissioners do not count against that time. Correspondingly, anyone that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding the application also has a 15-minute cumulative time to speak. If you have people lining up behind you wanting to speak, please be courteous to them and leave them some time to speak. Questions, again, from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners will not count against that time. Mr. Robinson, is there any announcements that I am forgetting at this time?
I just have one announcement. There was an old business that was forwarded from April 29th, Planning Commission meeting, application 2106Z, application by Shane Osmer. That has been administratively withdrawn and is, will no longer be on any future agendas.
Thank you very much. One last bit is all questions, comments from the applicant or anyone else are to be addressed to the chairman during the session. Mr. Robinson, if you'll present the first application?
Good afternoon, everyone. First application, 2020, I mean, 2021-22Z, application by Dan Džordjevich, requesting to rezone 11.56 acres from R2 Suburban Residential Day 1 Agricultural for a small hobby farm and agricultural purposes. Property is located in Land Lot 728 and 785, District 3, Section 3. It's on the east side of Cartersville Highway, State Route 61, and it's south of Davs Bridge Road. Address is 6140 Cartersville Highway. It's in Commission Post 4. Staff has recommended approval with one stipulation, and we've had no noted opposition on this one.
Is the applicant present?
Here.
If you would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, committee members. My application is pretty simple, just to rezone residential to agricultural for, again, for the purposes of a small hobby farm. The property, as you may or may not know, has a large history of farming in itself. We recently moved to that property about a year and a half ago, and we would like to restore that history of farming, just within our little, small hobby farm operation.
At the beginning, go ahead and state your name for the record.
Sorry, I did read that on the paper, too.
That's all right.
Dan Džordjevich, 6140 Cartersville Highway.
Thank you very much. Are you familiar with the applicant, with the one stipulation that the county staff has provided?
I'm not.
Okay, says owner applicant agrees to no swine facilities, structures, or uses on the property.
Yes.
And you're okay with that?
I am.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Džordjevich.
Well, thank you.
And again, there's time remaining. If there's anything that does come up, I don't know that there will. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, thank you. You can take your seat.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion with regard to application 2021-08-Z.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Leggett.
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald, and that is with the one stipulation?
With the one stipulation.
All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. It will be forwarded to tonight's meeting at 7:00 for the Board of Commissioners in this room. You need to be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Next application is 202103SUP, application by Signis Georgia LLC, Andy Cummings, requesting a special use permit on 8.26 acres, which is on B2 Highway Business, for a paid parking storage lot with up to 122 parking spaces. Property is located in Land Lot 543, District 2, Section 3. It's on the east side of Hiram McWhorter Highway. It's north of US 278. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff recommends three printed stipulations if it's recommended for approval. And we've had a couple of neighbors in the rear had concerns and questions. And just a note that this property was originally zoned B2 with a special use permit for a mini storage facility warehouse in July 2007.
Is the applicant present?
Present.
If you would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments
Mr. Chairman, thanks for allowing us to come today. As is identified, we are requesting a special use permit on 8.26 acres.
Sorry, would you just go ahead and state your name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Dennis McKean with Signis Georgia LLC.
Thank you. Please continue.
As mentioned, we are looking for a special use permit on 8.26 acres at 276 Highway 92. The property was previously zoned with an approval for the storage facilities. Our intention is to develop the parcel with paid parking storage as it currently lies and, yep.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
I have a couple.
Is the property, is it still wooded?
No, sir. It's been cleared, and a privacy fence has been put up. I believe it's approximately three and a half acres.
So, a privacy fence is around the whole perimeter of the property?
Yes, it's a six-foot fence, wood fence.
So, the parking, is that going to be paved or gravel, or what will that be?
It'll be crush and run, so it'll be gravel mostly.
Okay.
Are you familiar with the three stipulations that the county staff has recommended on the application?
Yes, sir.
And you're agreeable to those?
Yes, sir. The, yeah, that's our plan. Would, if there's a specific indications in the planted buffer, if there are any of those, otherwise, we'll kind of run with our own.
I believe there are requirements as far as a planted buffer in the corridor overlay district, and that would go through plan review for any design approval by the county. Is that correct, Mr. Robinson?
That is, that is correct. This one is an extra buffer added on. 50 feet is an increase. And what we'll be doing is working with the applicant on primarily a really heavy screening of the site, so if you drive down the highway, you're not really seeing all these boats and campers parked over there.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I've got a couple. So, the clearing, it's already occurred. Is that, you expect to clear more, or is that?
No, there'll be no additional clearing, so if you drive by right now, that's the full site that we plan to use.
And you're proposing 122 parking sites?
Yes, sir.
Are we limiting that at 122, or is there any type of zoning that?
We can hold it site plan specific on the number of lots if you would choose to do that.
I'm assuming this is a preliminary site plan. I mean, you've got, you've worked with an engineer, and you have some idea of what you're going to do.
Yes, sir, we're engineers here.
That's all I have.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Will you be parking 18 wheelers on that location?
No, sir. That's not our intention.
Not your intentions, but...
We won't have turning radius for it anyway. Yes, sir, we will not be.
Mr. Chairman, the B2 with a special use would not permit freight carrier parking.
Okay. It's good to know that. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners?
Is there a sewer available on this site?
No, sir, there's not. No, sir, there's not.
Any other? Ms. Ashmore? Are you able to address that?
I don't think I can address that. I'm thinking right now. Information following the meeting.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? You may take your seat.
Thank you.
Again, you had time remaining, so is anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this application at this time? Hearing none, is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none. At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2021-03-SUP.
Mr. Chairman, I ask, is Ross Wood?
Yes, sir.
So, let's go through review process. We all be reviewing the stormwater runoff and that kind of thing, or will that be required?
That would be a full plan review process, including stormwater management plans through the civil plan review process.
And that also includes the aesthetic requirements also required in the corridor overlay district?
That is correct. And also, I wanted to bring up, in the rear of the property, been a B2, would normally require a 40-foot buffer. Because there's a stream back there, we estimate the natural buffer to be around anywhere 150 to 200 feet.
Thank you. Any other questions? From Planning Commission to the staff? Then I will go back to entertaining a motion with regard to this application.
I make the motion to approve with the three stipulations and limiting to 122 parking spaces.
I have a motion from Mr. Steele to approve with the three listed stipulations and the added limitation to 122 parking spaces.
As they proposed on there.
As proposed. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Applicant needs to be present for it to be considered. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, moving along. Next application is 202109Z, application by MetroDerm PC, requesting to rezone 2.17 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to B2 Highway Business District to develop a 30,000-square-foot medical office building. Property is located in Land Lot 476, District 2, Section 3. It's on the west side of Breezy Valley Drive, a road, and it's south of US 278. It's in Commission Post 3. Staff has recommended approval with eight printed stipulations, and we have no noted opposition on this track. Are this rezoning, and the applicant is present.
The applicant, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Scott Kendall. I'm with MetroDerm. MetroDerm is a dermatology practice that is located in metropolitan Atlanta. We've had a office here in the Paulding County market at Bill Carruth Parkway attached to the hospital for approximately 10 years. As most of you probably know, there's not a lot of space available for expansion in that, in that complex. We're actually, you're in the process of also doing a second office right down the street, and, but our long-term goal is we want to build our own building so we can have control over our growth. Our plan is to build approximately a 30,000-square-foot office building. This is two of three parcels that are being assembled. The front parcel is about .75 acres, which is already zoned B2. These two need to be rezoned to B2, so that is our, that's our plan.
Is the 30,000 square feet exclusively for your use, or will you be having?
We haven't even determined it at that time. Right now, we have 7,500 square feet at the hospital, and we're leasing another 6,500 square feet. So, by the time we're ready to build, we may need more, we may need to do the whole 30,000, and we may split it up.
Are you familiar with the eight listed stipulations recommended by the county staff?
I am, yes, sir.
And you're agreeable to those?
Yes, sir. I'm not familiar with the copper mine sewer service basin, but I understand what the implication is there.
Are there any questions to the applicant?
It's just down the street from there. Are you going to be, what, will you be using the old Breezy Valley Road as an entrance into your development?
Well, that would be the plan. I've been in conversations with Kathy, I can't remember Kathy's last name.
Stahler.
Yes. As a matter of fact, I stopped in there on the way, way in today, just to kind of get the latest and greatest, but that would certainly be, be our intent, where we could access off of Breezy Valley Road and wrap around, you know, to the, to the hospital as well.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners?
Just curious, is this dermatology practice?
Yes, sir, dermatology.
A lot of square foot, square feet?
Yeah, well, we have a lot of physicians there, a lot of physicians assistants there. Like I said, we're, we're in need of more space now, so we're in the process of leasing another 6,500 square feet right down the street, where we would have two offices within about a quarter mile of each other.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? If you would, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
I'm Spencer Cohn. I am owner of 92 HPW LLC, which is the building with the green roof on the first building east of the proposed development. And I'm not either standing in opposition or in support of it. I just wanted to see if there's any expansion on what the plan is for Breezy Valley. At present, it does not connect through, and I was interested to see what the traffic flow or how that would be adjusted if this property were to come to fruition.
Well, you have a multitude of, well, you have two different jurisdictions there. One between the city of Hiram and then the unincorporated property that we're discussing right now. Breezy Valley actually runs through the city of Hiram's piece that goes all the way over to Bill Carruth Parkway. There was an agreement on the books back when that property was originally clear cut and rezoned, you know, in preparation, I believe, for a Lowe's at the time. And they had made a commitment that they would reestablish Breezy Valley's connection to Bill Carruth Parkway. Hiram has not forgot that. Hint, hint. So, I'm assuming that at some point, once further development continues, that there will be an effort to reconnect it to Bill Carruth.
Okay.
As far as connecting off of it to the interior of the commercial subdivision that your building is a part of, there hasn't been any plans for that as of yet.
Okay. And is the, is there any stipulation related to the completion of Breezy Valley with respect to this project, or?
No, sir. It was mostly contingent upon the piece that was originally intended as a Lowe's property.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there is a planned project out there that I would have to defer to...
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, our DRT director.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. As you know, Breezy Valley at this point in time does not connect all the way through from 278 to Bill Carruth. Breezy Valley, when it was an unapproved roadway on the Bill Carruth side, used to tie in to, I guess, the old Egg Farm Road, Bill Carruth, north of where it did, or it, or it does currently now. However, it was moved along with the development of the racetrack and the, the manor that's built on the opposite side of the road, so now it comes out opposite the hospital at that point. We have plans that we have for Breezy Valley Connector that shows a, you know, a full connecting road all the way from where it ends right now, the racetrack manor back up to 278. Obviously, we would have to work with the adjacent property owners because they're changing the amount of traffic and the type of traffic going out there. So, that's why we asked for one of the stipulations to enter into a development agreement to basically cover the responsibilities for the improved roadway to accommodate this development traffic.
That's great news. Any questions to the staff? To Mr. Jones? Board of Commissioners? Thank you. That's very good information. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition or have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion with regard to application 2021-09-Z.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henson. That's with the eight stipulations.
Eight stipulations.
And a second by Mr. Leggett, or was it? Okay.
Yes.
I knew it was from this side. I was looking that way. Sorry. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Again, it will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners meeting at 7:00. The applicant must be present for it to be considered. And as a patron, I'm glad to see the development. Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Next application, 2120, 2021-10Z, application by Neil Craig Rainwater, requesting to rezone approximately one acre from R2 Suburban Residential District to B2 Highway Business District to construct approximately a 2,500-square-foot warehouse in association with the adjacent existing business. Property is located in Land Lot 253, District 2, Section 3. It's on the east side of Hiram McWhorter Highway, State Route 92, and it's south of Charles Hardy Parkway, SR 120. It's in Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval with five stipulations, and we have no noted opposition, and the applicant is present.
If you would, please come around, sign in, and state your name, address your comments
Hello, my name is Neil Craig Rainwater, and my application is to rezone one acre of a two-acre parcel. The two-acre parcel was originally zoned back in the 80s, and for whatever reason, it was split. Half is B2, half is R2. I'd like to request a rezone to B2 for the entire parcel, and my plan is to build a 2,500-square-foot additional storage facility on it for our heating and air business.
Okay. And you're familiar with the five stipulations recommended by staff?
I am.
And you're agreeable to those?
I am.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else asking questions of the applicant, Planning Commission?
Make sure I understand correctly, Mr. Rainwater. You have a parcel that half of it is on one way, half's the other, but it's one parcel?
Correct.
Okay, so you're just trying to clean that up?
I'm just trying to clean it all up. That's correct.
Okay. And you're going to store just HVAC unit and stuff in the building?
Correct.
Okay.
No additional employees, nothing of that nature, just storage facility.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Thank you very much, Mr. Rainwater.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Thought we were going to have to evacuate.
Can't tell you, Spiff farmer, can you?
Yeah. Is there, where were we? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application, or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion with regard to application 2020-10-Z.
I make a motion to approve with the five stipulations.
I have a motion to approve with the five stipulations from Mr. Steele. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. And again, will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners. The applicant must be present for it to be heard. And Mr. Robinson?
Okay. The final application is 2021-11Z, application by David and Catherine Wiley, requesting to rezone approximately 10.48 acres, which is in four tracks of A1 District to R2 Suburban Residential District to be in zoning conformance and to sell as residential. Property is located in Land Lots 956 and 1005, District 19, Section 3. It's on the west side of Billy Bullock Road, south of Buchanan Highway, which is SR 120. It's in Commission Post 2. Staff has recommended approval, and we've had no opposition on this one.
And is the applicant present? If you would, please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments
I don't hear good, so y'all have to speak up. I don't know what I was supposed to do.
If you would, please sign in and state your name, and then address your comments to me.
David Wiley.
If you would, present your application to us. Tell us what you're doing.
Yeah, I'm just wanting to rezone this property from agricultural to residential.
And there are no listed stipulations, so thank you. And if you want to help him with signing in, thank you.
Thank you. Sign in there.
Is there anyone else here that would wish to speak on behalf of this application? Pardon me, are there any questions to the applicant?
I've got a question, Mr. Robinson.
Sorry, sir. There's a question.
Apparently, I'm still recovering. If you would, come back up here. See if there's any questions from the Planning Commission.
This is four parcels, correct?
It is four parcels that are all under the current minimal standard for agricultural district.
All right, so you're going to have four parcels that...
So, really, the four parcels, I don't know how they got created, but they did. They all are less than five acre, and so, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
The minimal lot size agricultural zoning is, is five-acre lots.
Right, that's why I asked.
And these are four parcels under five acres that happen over time, and it's just a matter of putting them in replants. And I believe one of the tracks would be for relative.
They're currently R2?
They're currently A1.
A1.
And he's asking to go to R2.
How many are you planning, is your family planning on building on this property? Yes, I have two daughters and one son that's going to build on this property, yes. So, they're going to use a common driveway between the three of them? Yes. Okay. Yes, there, there should be a driveway posted with this showing it going out to Billy Bullock. But there, there is one driveway that's already established. It appears that there's already one, one building on it already.
Looks like there's two.
Two, there's one on the top there. There's two homes out on those tracks.
I didn't see that one up there. Okay. All right. That's all my questions.
Any other questions to the applicant, Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Thank you, sir, sorry. Anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion for application 2021-11-Z. I have a motion to approve from Mr. Aston. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Again, this application will be forwarded to tonight's meetings of the Planning Committee, of Board of Commissioners. Applicant will need to be present for it to be considered. And Ms. Lippman? If you would, uh, I guess introduce our next topic?
Yep. Our next topic is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Um, this will affect Articles 3, 6, 7, and 8, as well as Chapter 67 of the Code of Ordinance and Appendix D of the Code of Ordinance. If you recall, a couple months ago, I gave you an update on the work we've been doing on a unified development ordinance. Um, and every time I talk about that, I highlight, um, five new commercial slash industrial zoning districts that we, um, wrote with that update. Those are, I'll go ahead and give you those names. It's e-commerce retail zoning district, e-commerce business park zoning district, business-to-consumer logistics zoning district, advanced manufacturing logistics district, and an agricultural business district. Um, our, our friends at Economic Development and the IBA loved the zoning districts so much that they asked us to go ahead and incorporate those into our existing ordinance. And to do so, in addition to adopting the zoning district, um, we included all of the proposed uses in the definitions. We updated all of the surrounding zoning districts to include buffers. We, um, included parking requirements for each of the proposed uses. Um, we incorporated these districts into our assigned ordinance, and we incorporated them into our telecommunications antennas and towers ordinance. I don't know how much more in-depth you want to go, just, I'll just say that these districts are kind of a bridge between your traditional commercial zoning districts and your traditional industrial zoning districts. I don't know, I bet you, I'm not the only one in the room who got an Amazon delivery this week, um, so we're kind of thinking that some of these, um, that the resurgence, resurgence, I mean resurgence, of e-commerce, that some of these would be attractive to people looking at Paulding County to, um, operate a business.
And I would say your definitions are a bit more extensive than things we've had in the past.
Yes. Just so, while we're talking about definitions, we are in the new unified development ordinance. We are converting most of our uses to terminology used by the North American Industrial Classification System, and therefore, every one of those that has a number in parentheses, you know that's a NAICS terminology, and that is the NAICS definition.
Just real quickly, the benefit to that is what?
Um, well, we've tied all of the businesses that, um, get an occupational tax permit, they give us their six-digit number, and that gives us, and it gives Economic Development and the IBA a good way to track things. And when, um, it, it's gonna help people like Chris out, 'cause it, it specifies what type of business is allowed, and we determine if a business that comes in is permitted or not permitted.
There any questions to the Director from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners? Well, I think every time that you've done a presentation of this, I've always tried to commend you on the work of yourself and your staff. It was a very meticulous and tedious process. I was privileged to be a part of a good bit of it, um, and y'all have done a, a very good job. I guess at this point, we will open the floor to public comment as a part of the public hearing process, and that is now. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, sign in to, at the lectern, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair. Hearing none, I will now close the public comment portion of this public hearing, and a recommendation vote can be taken from the Planning Commission to be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners meeting for tonight, right? So at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the proposed text amendments and adopt them.
I have a motion to approve the proposed text amendments for the zoning ordinance and to adopt them by Mr. Leggett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Henson seconded. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one. Is there anything we need to say before we adjourn? I know I'm forgetting something probably. Well, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Steele. Do I have a second? Second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes five, zero, and one, and I hope everybody has a great end of the month.